Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, December 20, 2022, meeting of the Edina City Council. Before we call the meeting to order, I want to just reiterate a couple of things that Director Benarott talked with the audience about earlier. There may be folks that are tuning in virtually. We have been running these hybrid forms of meetings, allowing people to participate. If they don't feel comfortable coming from to City Hall, they can participate remotely. We're going to continue this sort of practice, at least indefinitely, or at least in the near future. So people may be watching on cable TV or edinamn.gov live meetings, or on facebook.com/edinamn. Generally, when we have public hearings, we also, of course, have consistently community comment. There may be two opportunities for people to call in in those circumstances, but as Director Benarott pointed out this evening, we don't have any public hearings that we're going to be dealing with, so there'll be only one opportunity to call in to visit with the council tonight on a matter that's of concern to you. Now, if you do call in or you're in the audience, just a reminder that it cannot be an item that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing, so keep that in mind. We're certainly happy to hear any other concerns that you might have, but it cannot relate to anything that's on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Having provided that information, and you can see here now the number for community comment to call in, I would suggest you call in now because that'll come up quickly on the agenda. And I'm now going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a form of meeting agenda that's been published to the general public and also for all the council members. Is there anyone on the council or anyone on staff that wishes to modify the agenda in any form? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Staunton seconds. See approval of the meeting agenda? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are at community comment. Let's put that number up on the screen one more time so folks that might be calling in can call in. But first, I'm going to turn to people in the audience and see if anyone in the audience wishes to talk to the council about anything that's of concern to them this evening that's not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Anyone wish to come forward? Okay. Let's go then to anybody that may be listening online. Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue?
We do not have anyone in the queue. I would recommend, however, that we wait a minute. There is a slight delay in the broadcast, and I wouldn't want anyone to not have the opportunity to speak. So my clock shows that it's 7:04. I'll come back to you when I have a caller or at 7:05, whichever is first.
All right.
It is now 7:05, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it's safe to move on with the agenda.
Thank you. As is our practice, we turn now to our city manager to see if he has prepared any responses to community comments that were made in the prior meeting. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a number of comments at our previous meeting from folks who live in the Cornelia neighborhood or around the Lake Cornelia, and talking about traffic safety in their neighborhood, specifically on West 70th Street. We are collecting data on that, on those requests, and trying to figure out, put together enough information and data together to make some decisions, and some of that's already started, and there'll be more of it in the spring when the snow is melted. We had a resident congratulate the council on your service, specifically in the entire council, but also specifically council members Staunton and Anderson. We also had a congratulatory comment from a Cornelia resident about our new utility building structure, which is not a very common compliment to get in city government, but in terms of its impact and encouragement to conserve water, that was a nice comment to get, and that's what we had.
Good. Thank you. That prompt any questions from council members or comments? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that the neighbors did raise on the 70th Street was whether there could be some traffic enforcement, and I think, you know, as we gather data, it would be nice to at least consider doing that because I think they're really seeing some high speeds along there.
Yep, that is underway.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. All right. Next matter on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda this evening. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson, to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter there is Resolution 2022-118, accepting donations. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second. The motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Anderson, to adopt Resolution 2022-118, which accepts donations from residents on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-118, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And I'm just getting those online here. In this reporting period, there were two donations to the Park and Rec Department, one from Andy Warzac, one of our residents, Four Trees, a value of $1,500, and then Fox Homes LLC provided some trees for the location at 4529 Laguna Drive that was close to a couple thousand dollars worth of trees. So thanks to those organizations and their contribution and individuals for their contributions to the Park and Rec Department. And moving on, Resolution 2022-110, the Morningside C Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement. We had a presentation at our last meeting by Director Milner, and he is going to make another presentation this evening as the public hearing closed several days ago, and we're now going to make a decision as to whether to go forward with that project. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, we had the Better Together website open since the public hearing was held here. We received comments on sidewalks, requests for more sidewalks. There was some assessment questions and clarifications. There was requests for assessment changes based on the comparisons of a previous project, and I'll give you a little details on that. Some bike facility clarifications, traffic calming, and turf restoration suggestions. So many of the comments we typically hear with street reconstructions. Two of those comments on the cost of the project. So we're proposing an assessment of $13,800. It was significantly less in the year before project because we have a lot more properties that have zero REUs. Those are properties located within the floodplain, city-owned properties, that we typically don't assess ourselves because they're not developable. We've had other street reconstruction projects with the same impact. Arden Park was one, Pamela Park on 58th Street, and then over by Bretison Park on the west side, so big areas of parks that were in floodplains that we didn't assess ourselves. So it's not a new thing that's happened, it's just we haven't had them just back-to-back projects like this. I would recommend you approve the project with that assessment amount. It's preliminary, and we'll be coming back to you with the bid results, and we can update the cost at that point, and then we also try to manage the project to be less than the assessment. So we really need, and if we want to build it this summer, we need your approval tonight to keep moving forward on the bidding, but the cost itself could be something we discuss in early '23 if the council so chooses. We could come back and discuss that. On the sidewalk piece, we got surveys out to the residents that live along those streets on the request for additional sidewalks. We started looking at budgets. We've had some petitions already submitted when residents did their own survey up and down a couple of the streets, so we would like a little bit more time on that. We'd bring that back at the second meeting in January to see whether or not we want to add those additional sidewalks that were requested. So I would recommend approving that Resolution 2022-110 with assessments at $13,800, and would look to any comments on that assessment amount in the new year. I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner? Yes, Member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We did receive a number of comments about the assessment and a few asking us to table making a decision, and I think you did a good job of clarifying where we are process-wise, that we, there's still time that once we learn more, there could or there could not be a change. And so I, no question, really, I appreciate you for clarifying that. And then, I guess I would ask, is there anything that we could do to just clarify process for the neighbors that may be impacted, whether that's a communication or what have you? I would urge us to consider doing something like that.
Sure, we can use the Better Together webpage again and provide a little clarification of what's included in the assessments and that process. You know, we got contingency in there right now. We're going to go for bids. Maybe we get really good numbers. We try to stay under the number, but we don't know really until we get the bids. And then, again, it's not a final assessment until that final assessment hearing in the fall of 2024. So if the council so chooses, we could have a discussion on there. It is based on the policy that the council approved in '21, so it would be outside that policy. I don't know how you would reduce it, but, you know, that's a prerogative of the council if they want to discuss those options.
Yeah, I'm just a super fan of clarity and just helping everybody understand the process and where we are within it. So if we can use the website to add a little bit more clarity, I think that would suffice it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you mentioned that there are a couple other road reconstruction projects where there was a similar situation with land that can't be developed. If we're updating stuff on Better Together, if you could include those comparisons, I think that'd be useful so that people don't feel that, oh, they've got kind of a raw deal, that this is an ongoing policy that has affected other neighborhoods as well. I think that'd be useful. And then I have a question about the sidewalks. Because it's paid for with the PACS fund, we don't have to make a decision tonight. Is that why we're, we'll make a decision about the assessment but not about the sidewalk because that's our money to make the decision with? Is that correct?
Yeah, yep. You don't need to make that decision tonight. The bigger part of the project, if you approve it tonight, we got enough work to keep going, and adding a sidewalk on one of those streets is not a huge change in course of staff doing the design. So we feel we can wait on those few streets. We're having those discussions, and we'd want to come back to you in January.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, Director Milner. We've had, along with the inquiries already made, I've had some questions about the impact of the special benefit on some of the higher assessed areas, and it's a vague concern for me. I can see that the condition of the pavement, I mean, this has to be done. That's very clear. And I know that we're on a path with special assessments. However, the timing of this one doesn't really present as much relief for some of the homeowners that seem to be impacted the most, and those, that's the nature of the inquiries that I've received in terms of, well, what do we do if this, how much does this really benefit us? How does this really help us? Well, they're helped because the roadway's redone, and you're down to gravel in some areas through there, but I wonder if you could expand on that just a little bit and also place this in the progress that we make towards the special assessments being moved to the general levy.
Yeah, two good points. So right now, we're at a 32% reduction based on the current policy. So we're already, it was 32% less than what it would have been prior to that new policy. And then the second question is assessments. The properties have to see a market benefit. That's the state statute. In the packet information, there was a letter that we have an appraiser give us a broad overview of the neighborhood, and this assessment falls within that range provided by that appraiser, so we're confident that the assessment provides the market benefit test needed to meet the statute.
Thank you. That's helpful. Is there, do you have a process as you move into it? Now, we're not approving the amount of the special assessment. We're just saying, get the bids. We know we need to do this. Let's move forward. That's what we're voting on tonight. Is there a process as you move into it to really kind of, is there a further evaluation of the impact of this special benefit on the homeowners?
We typically don't because we do it at this point, and it meets that test, and then we have that letter. We go for bids. We hope, you know, if it didn't meet the letter, then we'd have a conversation about what to do, but since it met that initial analysis, we open bids, and we hope they come in lower than that number. You are setting a preliminary assessment amount tonight, so that will be filed, so if anybody tries to sell their property, that number will be there as a pending assessment. So it will be on there, but the council will take that action in the fall of 2024 to set the final amount at that point. So again, we're hoping it comes in lower based on bids and management of the project.
Okay. Is there an internal procedure to evaluate the amount of that assessment? I mean, we make a preliminary, we agreed to a preliminary assessment amount tonight. Is there a further procedure of any kind to evaluate that?
We have not done that in the past. We typically did it now at this point in the public hearing and never analyzed the market benefit test after this point.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Member Staunton, anything? It might be helpful, too, to go through one more time the assessment methodology because I think some of the neighbors are confused by the fact that other parts of the Morningside neighborhood were in the $9,000 range, and now they're in the almost $14,000 range. And understanding full well what your answer was to Member Anderson, that, and at least the way I understood it, if we had not modified, but for modifying our special assessment policy, this assessment that's proposed at a preliminary assessment level, not a final assessment level, at 13,800 would be roughly one-third higher than it is now. It'd be up in the $17,000, $18,000 range had we maintained the historic sort of methodology that we used.
Correct.
Where the city paid for everything, everybody in the city paid for everything under the roadway that got improved, plus the curb and gutter, and the residents paid for the street replacement. Is that fair?
Correct. Yep, we'd be a third higher. I mean, the residents are not paying for curb and gutter. That's storm sewer. They're not paying for water main, storm, sanitary. They're basically paying for the street roadbed. They're not paying for subcuts or retaining walls. That was pulled out as part of the work by the task force and ultimately that updated assessment policy that the council approved in the summer of '21, and the transition is going till 2035, and that's the point when assessments will be no longer applied to street reconstruction as long as we continue with that policy.
All right. And then with respect to items that are more specific in nature, like pet containment and irrigation systems, to the extent those things need to be disturbed, we repair those as part of the process.
Correct.
That cost is not placed on the homeowner?
That's part of the bucket of money altogether, so partially assessed and partially not assessed.
Okay.
Yep, but we are repairing that systems, those systems with the project.
All right, understood. And then I like this idea of taking a little bit longer look at the sidewalk situation because it just seems like a neighborhood that's made for sidewalks, and I think the neighbors tend to feel that same way. So to the extent we should broaden out our, well, our intent there and put in more sidewalks than what we're planning, I'm open to that idea, and I think our other council members are, too, and some of the residents are asking us to take that longer look. And you're petitioning them to see, as I understood from your testimony, to what extent they want sidewalks.
Correct. There's a postcard out with a survey now. They can go on the website, take a survey. Do you want a sidewalk? And then we ask, do you want it on your side of the street, knowing you have to maintain it? So we want to actually know that people understand that the road will be narrowed to protect trees and that they have to maintain the sidewalk. So we kind of asked two different questions there, and we'll provide those results back to you, but we received one petition from one street, and it was 90-some percent want the sidewalk.
All right.
So I think there's really strong support. So now it's looking at budgets. Now's the time to do it with street recon, but we want to make sure they understand the impacts of narrowing the streets. We try to save all the trees, but maybe there's a tree or two that we have to work with a specific neighbor on for the sidewalk.
Okay, good. All right. Any other questions for Director Milner? Does anyone care to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-110, Morningside C Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement embodied in BA 462? That includes a preliminary, estimated preliminary assessment of $13,800 per residential equivalent unit?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson to adopt the motion as stated, second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And next, we are on to Resolution 2022-97 and 2022-98. Ordinance number 2022-17 involves a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, and site plan with multiple variances for 6016 Vernon Avenue, and Director Teague, our community development director, has this matter. And the nature of the items involved in this proceeding require a four-fifths majority vote to make the comp plan vote, and that'll be the key for everything here, is the comp plan vote. All right, Director Teague.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the proposal to remodel and expand the Keys Automotive on Vernon. As mentioned, the comprehensive plan amendment is requested here. It's currently designated medium-density residential to neighborhood node. There's also a rezoning request from PCD IV to PCD I. As part of that rezoning, there's a variance involved. Restaurants in the PCD I district need to be at least one acre in size, 43,000 square feet, and this property is 16, just over 16,000 square feet. There's also a site plan request with multiple variances, as were highlighted in the presentation two weeks ago and within the resolutions. Staff has outlined options for the council to consider, both for approval and denial of all of these requests. The staff and the planning commission recommendation is for denial. The planning commission vote was seven to zero. From the last meeting, we received nearly 100 more additional comments on Better Together, many of them the same as the testimony that we received. Those that are against the project are concerned about the small lot size, parking, noise, traffic, the use so close to single-family homes and the apartments to the west. Those that are for it, you know, want that, want a neighborhood restaurant, a gathering place, some kind of a community gathering place, and many reference the lack of restaurants on the west side of town. The city's parking and traffic consultant is with us to answer any questions you may have in regards to the parking and traffic. The applicants are here as well to answer any questions you may have, and with that, I'll turn it back to the council for discussion.
All right, thank you. Does anyone on the council have a question for Director Teague as a follow-up? Member Anderson?
Thank you. Director Teague, when we talked about the number of seats that would be available in a proposed restaurant, it relates to the number of parking spaces, and what's indicated here is we've got 24, correct?
Correct.
And six are designated for employees, if I understand it correctly. All right, so that leaves us with 18, and the eligibility for seating is based on three seats per parking space available to the public. Accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so, well, we discussed the possibility of 42 seats two weeks ago, and I'm not sure. So are we talking about 42 or 54?
Yeah, so it's a good question. The city's code, this application was made prior to us amending the parking ordinance, so that's the standards that are applied here. Based on a 54-seat restaurant, they would be code compliant, but we did have that parking study that was done by WSB, and their conclusion is the size of a restaurant should be limited to 46 seats in order for it to have enough parking on-site.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? I think it may be beneficial to have a conversation here. Thinking about the nature of the requested action with a four-fifths vote being required to approve the comp plan change, I think getting council members' thoughts in advance might help us, might help guide us a little bit more effectively. So, Member Anderson, I'm going to turn back to you and let you segue off yourself here and give us some of your thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Well, I spent a lot of time here ruminating about this, as everyone here has, and I think everybody in the room has, so let me just march through, if I may, the progression as I see it. The proposal has morphed over the course of time, starting with the initial sketch plan review to the planning commission on October 27, 2021. That's over a year ago. Then a contentious council presentation, then moving on to a packed house here two weeks ago, provided two hours of what I believe to be very heartfelt public testimony. It has been mentioned that the city's Better Together site response has been unprecedented, overwhelmingly in favor of a neighborhood restaurant. I find that progression interesting because the capacity and very nature of the proposed restaurant remains uncertain, so the enthusiasm for it without really knowing what it is is just interesting to me. The immediate adjacent neighborhood is strongly opposed to the concept due to concerns relative to overflow parking, truck noise, cooking orders, and potential overserving if a liquor license can even be obtained. While both sides of sentiment seem passionate, I attended the neighborhood meeting when invited as an observer and noted civility, yet candor, and actually gained quite a bit of insight. To me, that meeting spoke well for the neighborhood and all concerned. One point made, which makes room for consideration, is that a neighborhood venue creates a walkable, bikeable destination, which is in alignment with many city goals, notably the Climate Action Plan. There's value to the various points of view expressed. Principled residents voicing their concerns or wishes is the basis of democracy, and we've had a very even-handed discussion over the course of time, and I appreciate that. The crux of the matter, though, is the status of the site, currently zoned PCD IV, its guided use under the existing, though not updated, comp plan, and the potential of rezoning, which, of course, requires a comp plan amendment. It's at the sole discretion of the council to amend the comp plan and grant the rezoning request with its numerous variances. Council has the authority to do so. While all the matters brought before the council are unique, what is important to me is that decisions are made reflectively with a keen ear to residents affected by them, while having a longer view of what is best for the city as defined by our zoning ordinances. We found, for instance, in the St. Peter's group home proposal, that gaining consensus on a comp plan amendment, which can impact adjacent R1 zoning, is beyond difficult. When Interlock and Country Club, however, sought to expand operations, it was established that the comp plan merely suggests or guides usage, but that zoning determines usage. Zoning is the law. In this case, PCD IV operations are allowable and can continue there. Rezoning has been approved by the council in the recent past for large developments on the basis of creating significant public benefit. The question here is, is there a public benefit which is attractive enough to approve this proposal, or is there any public benefit at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely appreciate all the comments from Councilmember Anderson. There's a few things that I will add to that, and, you know, oftentimes, I'll do the head and the heart, and so I am going to start with the heart. There were a couple of things that just rubbed me the wrong way, and I just, I think it's fair for me to raise those. One of the things that I did not appreciate is just the tactics that were used in this case, and I'm talking about two things in particular. One was originally I One was originally, I thought, yeah, it's kind of creative to do a survey, but, you know, we already have a process to collect feedback. And so the survey, once I went to the survey site, and there were questions around, do you want a restaurant? Do you want a car wash? Or do you want low-income housing? And I thought, wow, that is really misleading. And so I think in the last council meeting, we clarified that, and this underscores, again, Member Anderson's point, that site is already zoned for an auto repair shop. And so whoever owns that property can do one thing with it without having to come to council, and that is to operate an auto repair shop. And to suggest anything else, or to further suggest that the council is requiring something be done, in particular with that site, is misleading. And so that was one of the things that I definitely did not appreciate. And we actually received comments from the community members saying, hey, we see this. Is this true? Is this, right? And so we had to clarify that, which we did at the last council meeting. The second thing, the second tactic, and this was just a, you know, I'll call it logistics, but sitting on the die is, we can see everybody, and everybody can see us. And I thought, Mr. Mayor, you did a great thing by saying, hey, let's line up. You're for one side, you're against the other side, and then we will just allow, we'd go back and forth. I thought that was awesome. But what I noticed is everyone who was for it, who walked by, got to thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Those who were against it, that wasn't the case. And then what I really thought was interesting, there were a number of residents who were against it, who stood up and thanked everybody for participating in the process. And so this process is a process where we want everybody to feel encouraged to provide their feedback. And one of the things that was interesting that night, I left the working session to meet with a Cub Scout who wanted to interview a city council member. And one of his questions was, what do you like about government? And what would be your suggestion for someone who's interested in government? And I said, well, the one thing that I definitely love about it, it's an open process. So the one thing that you can do is to get involved, however you can. And then we come in, and that's exactly what we do. It was a rich conversation, and I felt like there were comments on both, both sides. And so I wanted to start with that. And then the, the, the other thing that really grounded me as we started to think through, as I started to process the information, coming into those, never really knowing, how are you going to vote? Are you just take the data, the information that you have, and you try, you talk to neighbors, and you try to understand, you drive the, the site, or you try to understand, how would you feel if you lived there? Would you? We live in Highlands. Would I walk to Keys? I walk by Keys quite a bit, right? So maybe I would grab a cup of coffee or a donut or something if a restaurant were there. And so I, you know, that is the way that I approach it. And so what was interesting is that even though we had two different sides, on the whole, I believe most people said, it'd be nice to have that service that's walkable. But one side said, but just not here. The site's too small. Maybe not across the street from my home, but it would be nice. I would use a restaurant if it was in walking distance, and Lincoln Drive is too far to be able to do that. And so to me, that was synergy to me in terms of, it would be nice to have this kind of, this kind of service. And so then I started to think, well, all right, if that's the case, what are the options to try to bring that to the community? And, you know, I've said this before, there have been folks that have asked us to honor the comp plan, and I believe the comp plan is a guide. It can change. It takes a supermajority to change it, but it's no different than our constitution. If there is a passionate reason that we've learned something new, that we want to make an adjustment to our comp plan, we can do that, but it takes a, a supermajority. And so as I continued to talk to neighbors, I talked to a neighbor just yesterday about this, I thought to myself, if we were to bring that service to the community, how could we do that in a way that provides the need, but answers some of the concerns that both sides are raising? And there were a couple of things that I wondered from a conditions perspective, and I don't know how these would, would impact this, or if they would necessarily sway me to a certain vote or not. But to be fully transparent, there are two things that would give me heartburn if I lived there. One was this talk about having a rooftop. If I lived on that street, I wouldn't want a restaurant or even an apartment complex, for that matter, with people that are congregating on the roof when I am living in a single-family home near there. And so I wouldn't want that, if that was, was something that was a part of this. And then the second thing that, there was a lot of conversation about was alcohol. That would be another one where I would say, man, if we did bring that service to the community, no alcohol. I wouldn't want to see alcohol be there. And that's within the rights of the city council as well, in terms of granting an alcohol license. So I start to, to try to think about, are there conditions that could move me one way or the other? And I, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to think about, but if we are going to amend the comp plan, I think it is that serious of a conversation that we really have to think through how we would do that, and can we do that in a way that would bring that service and need to the community.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Sutton?
So, I'm kind of in a reflective mood this evening, given that it's my last meeting, and I'm remembering back eight years ago this month, I had been elected, but I had not yet taken office. And the city had just, the city council was considering a comp, or a plan, the adoption of a complete streets plan. And there was an article in the Star Tribune, and I remember it vividly, and I have it in front of me, it said, "Longtime Edina Residents Up in Arms Over Plan to Build More Sidewalks." That was eight years ago. Just tonight, and at the last meeting, you heard that we had a street project, and the complaints about sidewalks were, how can you do a street project and not give me a sidewalk? So it tells you that, that we evolve as a community, and we get there, and we change, and there's needs that change as the community changes. And I want to compliment Mr. Davis and Mr. Collins, because I think you've tapped into the future. And my, my takeaway from the public hearing, which, by the way, was an awesome demonstration of just civility and passion, everybody cares a lot about that neighborhood, and, and it was terrific. My takeaway was, the future definitely needs something, to what Member Pierce said. The future is, is going to require some kind of restaurant facilities in that, in that area of town. So then I start thinking, well, the question for us as council members is, not the direction of change, because I think that is the direction, but the pace. Is it going to change now? And I think the difference between then and now is, that Complete Streets had gone through an elaborate process. There have been hearings, there have been community outreach, there have been all kinds of work to, to make it happen. And the council went ahead in the wake of that and made it happen. I think here, while I think it is the future, and I think it is going to happen, I think we haven't done enough yet to bring everybody together on this. And the reason that, that we've had comprehensive plan changes largely only where we've done small-area plans is not because anybody gets a veto, but because we need to have a broad discussion about a change in direction. That's why we went through all the community hearings we went through on the Complete Streets. That's why we've gone through small-area plans at Grandview, at Wooddale and Valleyview, at Southdale. And, and it hasn't necessarily ended in unanimity, but it's been a vehicle to help us transition to the future. So I've, I've walked it as well, because it's near where I am, and so I was able to walk over there with a friend. And, and at the same time, I was walking through Walnut Creek Park as well, and thought to myself, maybe this is a place we can have something. So the long and the short of it is, I think it is going to happen someday, but I think this is not the time to say yes yet. And I think more work is needed to be done. I applaud you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Collins, for trying, because I think you have advanced the ball. But I think we need more before we can, before we can make it happen.
Thank you, Member Sutton. Member Jackson?
I got to follow all that. So what I'd like to say is ditto, for starters. My colleagues have, have said some really wonderful things. One part of the story that you're probably not familiar with is, in 2017, when this comprehensive plan process started, the city had a big map down at the Public Works Building, and people came and wrote out on post-it notes their dreams and their hopes, and one of the things we did was put a pin from where we lived. And I put my pin down in Parkwood Knolls, and it was alone. We weren't hearing from people in this part of town when we put this comprehensive plan together. And I have to say, I was stunned by the number of people who stood up and said, we want something to happen in this neighborhood, because I was all alone in 2017. So, Member Sutton, you talked about the pace of change. I think, you know, the, the dramatic change between that day and last meeting was really moving. But I agree that this is, we need that process of a small-area plan to bring all these different points of view together, and this is really not the time or the forum to do that, but I think it's a conversation that we as a city need to have. It is kind of a, it's, it's a very sleepy part of town, and I think there is a desire out there to, to have this conversation. And so, but I don't think that tonight is the night to do that. So that's it.
Thank you, Member Jackson. At the last public hearing that we had, I talked about fundamental democracy, and Peter Brosius, who lives in our town, who runs the children's theater, likes to talk about how democracy and theater both started in Greece, and the notion that all voices should be heard, and all voices matter in a democracy, and that's what I told people two weeks ago. And somebody got up and, and I suppose smartly said, oh, okay, all right, that means that whoever has the most voices, you got to do what they say. But just because you've said, all voices should be heard and all voices matter, doesn't mean you're nose-counting. It's not, it's not our job to count noses. If, if that was the extent of the job, this town would be a mess. Because we don't, we don't operate that way. And so we'd look at all this data, and for me, you know, I could look at this in a couple of different ways. This property, which sits on what used to be Highway 169, and we used to have motels up here, where an apartment building is, across from Jerry's, it's a total outlier. I mean, it exists from an era in the 1950s when there was a gas station, there were gas stations all over town, you know, and that happened to be a place where there was a gas station. And then there was no longer a gas station, and then it was allowed to continue as an auto service repair facility. But it exists, to me, totally as a sore thumb in a residential neighborhood. And every time I drove by there and looked at that yellow color of the, all those buildings, and, and didn't resent that Kevin Keyes was making a nice little living there, and that people liked to go and get their cars fixed over there, that was fine. But I thought, well, there's going to come a day when this property doesn't need to be an outlier to the neighborhood anymore. And I think that time has come. And if it's not going to be an outlier to the neighborhood, what should it be? Well, it should be something that's, to me, consistent with the neighborhood. It should be something that, it's not, to me, it's, it's an opportunity to conform it to the neighborhood. And so for me, if we were going to amend the comp plan, I prefer to do it in a way where it accommodated housing. When I look at it the other way, and I think about, okay, what about all these people that were here that were for and against, and you think about the people that were for it, which, and everybody was, as my colleagues have pointed out, it was, it was a wonderful exercise in civility, in, with the way the public got to have discourse with each other. So I tend to use a balancing test. First I look at, is there a potential benefit to the community from the proposed project? I'd say, yeah, there's a potential benefit here to the community. And then the next question I always ask myself, is there a potential impact to the immediate neighborhood by having this Kevin Keyes property be a restaurant? And we've heard all of the reasons why immediate neighbors think it's a risk, that it poses some potential impact, that nobody wants to have a neighborhood that looks like the Red Cow neighborhood, you know? So, and understood. And so then the analysis for me is, does a potential adverse, adverse effect on the neighborhood outweigh the potential benefit to the public? And for me, clearly it does. The adverse potential benefit, adverse potential impact to the neighborhood outweighs any potential public benefit, in my mind. So I personally don't favor, whether I go one route or the other in terms of the analysis, the outlier analysis or the balancing test analysis, I don't favor amending the comp plan for the purpose that was requested. So I'd be, I would not be voting in favor of that. And it sounds like my colleagues feel the same way. Member Anderson, I don't know, you didn't exactly, you're, you're sitting there wondering, you know, which way?
Well, I am, and I have been, I am, and I have been for some time, and I remain bifurcated in this moment. I, I, only because, Member Sutton's comment about moving to it is accurate. And Member Pierce's questions about, can we, what conditions could you place in order to, if, if this were going to move ahead at this time? And I, you know, the applicants are here, and I suppose that if, if there was going to be an active discussion about that, and this may not be the time, but if there were to be an active discussion about it, when we talk about not issuing a liquor license, and then we, we confine it to 46 seats with 24 spaces, 18 spaces for the public, is that an acceptable business model? And so does, is there really a, does that conversation really need to occur? Because I wouldn't speak for the applicants, but I don't know how that could work without liquor. And, and liquor is really a, a primary concern in here, as I've heard it expressed. And there's going to be parking. However, I do also want to say this. When housing goes in there, as it, as it may, when housing goes in there, the parking on the street will occur. So the parking on the street So the parking on the street, to me, is not necessarily the biggest piece of this. There's no way that you can take a building down and have the construction universe parking in and around for a year, 18 months, and have that not impact the neighborhood. It does, and it will. And we've seen this, we've seen this many times before. We've got 2,000 tear-dos here. So when you look at that piece of it, you say, well, that doesn't, that isn't going to be the issue. The issue is going to be the impact on the neighborhood, as Mayor Hubble mentions. What is the impact on the neighborhood? And I think it would be significant at this time. Yes, absolutely. However, when the time does come, will it be less significant? Or will we, when will we be, when would we be ready to do that? And that's why I, you know, I'm not as clear as the mayor is in terms of, you know, that decision-making, that bifurcation. So I hope that clarifies--
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention was, you know, we talked about, and Member Staunton talked about, I think it was in 2008, we designated these areas of potential change, these neighborhood nodes, and it was 44th and France, it was 70th and Cahill, it was 50th and France, and it was Valley View, Wooddale. No mention of the Kevin Keyes site, because it really isn't a neighborhood node. It's not, it's not an area where there's a gathering of shops, and we're trying to figure out, you know, how to park it, for example, like down at 44th and France. It's, to me, it continues to be just a total outlier piece of property, inconsistent with what's there from a neighborhood standpoint. Now, years ago, when this all became single-family residences and multifamily condominiums nearby, and some apartments, if there would have been thought, given at that time to, you know, creating a neighborhood node, I might be thinking about it differently, but I just think that this property is, it exists on a grandfathered sort of basis, and for me, it just doesn't, doesn't fit. And what's proposed, it doesn't fit. Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pierce?
So the, the conversation that we're having, I think that, for me, it is, I think it's teed up in the way it should be. I have made this comment to members on both sides of the aisles, thinking back to the last meeting. If you only focus on the vote, then you've missed the point, right? You gotta pay even more attention to what happens next. And that gives us, as we think about this, different approaches we could take, right? To say, all right, well, maybe not this now. To follow up on Member Anderson's point, are there conditions that could allow us to provide some benefit to balance both as we think about the future? And the future, to me, does require a lot more conversation, and it requires a lot more input from the community to figure out what is the right thing to do there as well. But I think that that is the, to me, that is the right conversation to have. And we can't do that tonight, obviously, because it is a very involved process. But that feels right to me.
Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, I had a whole outline of things to say, and I have to say, you guys are all so thoughtful. And I went back and forth after the hearing, and I, first of all, I want to thank both the planning commission and everybody who testified. Some of the most thoughtful comments and analysis I've ever heard in the city. I thought it was a really wonderful process. And I especially wanted to say so to the planning commission. I thought they were really, and everybody testified, both here and at the planning commission, they did a great job. But as I went through this, I kept coming back to a thought that one of my predecessors told me when I first thought about running, and that is that people in Edina love their neighborhoods. And that's a thought that I want to embrace in, as the overall umbrella of everything that I'm saying. So we heard people who are for it, and people who are against it, who are in the neighborhood. But to me, this is a conversation for the neighborhood to have. What is the future of what they want to have? And that's a longer conversation. But I think, you know, we heard overwhelmingly, people do love this neighborhood, and that's an important thing. And I want them to feel empowered to embrace their neighborhood, and, which is why I just don't see a change happening tonight.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Anybody have anything further? Okay. So one thing that strikes me that we could do would be to take the comp plan up first, the comp plan, the potential amendment of the comp plan that's embodied in Resolution And that requires, as we mentioned earlier, a four-fifths vote. Member Pierce referred to it as a supermajority, and indeed it is. So we could, based on the conversation, it strikes me that the way Director Teague has provided us with resolutions, we could entertain a motion to deny Resolution 2022-98, which would deny the comp plan amendment. And then go from there, to the extent we might have to go further. Is there a motion to deny Resolution 2022-98, which deals with the comp plan?
So he's got two, you've got alternates. You've got a, you've got a motion to deny, you've got a resolution denying and a resolution approving, so.
Yes, so the motion would be for approval of the denial resolution. So it would be a vote in the affirmative for a denial of the comprehensive plan amendment.
All right.
Do we have a motion to approve the denial of the comp plan resolution?
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion have stated, and I'm not going to try it again. Say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Nays? Abstention? Member Anderson?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. All right. Attorney Kendall, what else do we need to do here, now that we've got a comp plan denial? Do we need to do, would you need to address these other matters?
Mayor, I'm just looking at the language, and it looks to me like the resolution prepared by Director Teague was a resolution denying the proposed comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning and multiple variances. So if that's correct, then--
We would need the council to act on Resolution 2022-97. That is for the denial of the rezoning and the site plan with variances. So we would need this second motion.
So 97 was for the comp plan, and 98 is for the remaining items. Is that right?
98 is--
The comp plan was 98, the one we just voted on.
98 was the comp plan, 97 is the remaining items. All right.
So Director Teague, you've got a Resolution 2022-97. You have it in denial form and approval form, and you're wanting us to take it in the denial form, based on what happened with respect to the comp plan amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-97, which denies--
Denial of a request for rezoning.
Yeah, denies the request for, bear with me a moment here, for the rezoning with multiple variances.
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton seconds, Member Pierce, Member Staunton moves, Member Pierce seconds the motion to deny Resolution 2022-97, which rejects the notion of the rezoning with multiple variances request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Abstention. Member Anderson? Motion carries. All right. Wish we could figure out a solution on the West Side, if people could find a place to go, but it's not going to be here. All right, thanks, everybody. It was good to have you all here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next matter we have in front of us is Resolution 2022-109, and that's setting the 2023 tax levy and adopting an operating budget. And Manager Neil has that matter. We've been through this. But we've worked on the budget for many months, and I'll let Manager Neil take it. I don't think we need an extensive presentation on it. I think we've been well-versed in the issues involved, but go ahead, Director, Manager Neil.
Thank you, your honor. As you noted, Resolution 2022-109 is a resolution that approves the proposed tax levy and operating budget for 2023. As you also noted, your honor, this process has been going on most of the year. We've had a couple of touchpoints with the council during the year to take your input on your levels of tolerance for the budget and the tax levy. We held a mandatory public hearing on December 6th. We had no comments offered at that public hearing. We have had a Better Together Edina page out there for quite a while. We've received two comments on that Better Together webpage. The proposed tax levy for 2023 is set at $49,885,000. Included in that is an increase for our kind of general operating budgets, but also two special levies on our special levy section. A million dollars for special parks improvement levy, and in an increase in our special street levy that Mr. Milner mentioned earlier tonight. This approval will also approve the proposed 2023 through 2028 capital improvement program for the city. It's a six-year program that spends $300 million in investments back into the public infrastructure of the city. That includes all kinds of infrastructure, city, it includes streets, sidewalks, parks, park playgrounds, park buildings, public buildings, underground utilities, et cetera. So $300 million over six years. We will take a similar action at the end of tonight's, at the end of tonight's council meeting. We will call a very brief HRA meeting to take a similar kind of levy and budget action for the HRA. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Manager Neil with regard to the proposed budget adoption? Or the tax levy? Or the capital improvement plan? All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-109, setting the 2023 tax levy, adopting the 2023 operating budget, and approving the 2023 through 2028 capital improvement plan?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves, Member Jackson seconds, the motion as stated. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And next, Manager Neil has this matter as well, Resolution 2022-116, which is our next potential support for local option sales tax. Manager Neil?
Thank you, your honor. This item, Resolution 2022-116, is the start of a new process with regards to seeking permission from the state legislature to have, to increase our spending from our currently adopted local option sales tax. In this case, to increase our spending plan for the benefit of increasing our ice capacity at Braemar Ice Arena to add a fourth rink. We do not currently have in the authorization that was granted by residents in the referendum this past fall, sufficient funds to do this aspect of the project. So this is why we have to seek this additional authorization from the state legislature. If you will recall, the city council approved a similar item about this same time last year. We pushed that item through the legislature, really made it into the tax bill. We were very close to having this authority wrapped up, and then the legislature did not approve the final tax bill. So that authorization got dropped. This action just reinstates that. This direction for a council action is the mandatory first step in the process. If you approve this, we notify the state legislature and the appropriate committees that the council wishes to proceed with this action, and then we begin the process all over again.
Questions for Manager Neil with regard to the, yeah, just, it's actually something that we did last year, and we were so close. The legislature had finished their work by the deadline, or gone into special session. I think we would have had this as part of our overall package, but we didn't get it, this element of it, and we need to go back and request that it be included again in the 2023 legislative--
I think it's worth noting that in our case, this isn't the case in most cities, but in our case, what we are really asking for is an addition, is additional authorization to spend money that will be collected from this tax. So we are not asking for an additional 5%. We're not asking for it to be imposed longer. We really are just asking for our ability to collect and spend money that voters have already approved.
That's a good point to make, that it does not, this request would not provide for any increase in what we've already been approved to do, and that's a half a cent sales tax for up to 19 years.
That's correct.
This, this project would be encompassed within that existing spending spectrum.
That's right.
Okay. Other questions for Manager Neil? Is there a motion to approve-- Oh, excuse me, yeah, Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I thought we'd just take a moment before a vote to provide just a bit of depth to Manager Neil's remarks. And just to stress the importance of completing the improvement and expansion of Braemar Arena. As many know, an ahot group of former players, coaches, and ice sports enthusiasts have worked on bringing the arena up to code and the standards seen all over the metro area to better serve all stakeholders at Braemar. Nick Sparides, the noted arena architect, has donated his time and talent over the course of these years, prior to the inaction of the local option sales tax, to developing initial concepts, including the addition of a fourth sheet of interior ice. What is important here is that the demand for ice time is higher than ever, and with over 400 mites, which are really entry-level players, and the amazing growth of figure skating in our town, it's easy to project future demand. By the way, that's the second year in a row of over 400 mites in the program. The Ballard King study that Director Vetter commissioned is a study of the financial impact to the city, which is significant, because depending on staffing needs, the deficit created annually at the arena would be, would reduce the deficit somewhere between $109,000 and $245,000. That deficit has been funded historically by liquor store operations. In turn, those savings could then be directed to other capital improvements, which it's a win-win. So if this were to pass tonight, this would be the first step towards finalizing a process begun almost four years ago, and has my support.
Yeah, thank you, Member Anderson. Other thoughts from, yes, Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want the public to remember that when we're doing, is it the South Arena that has the wavy ice? Or the East? The East Arena has the permafrost, which is making wavy ice, and yeah, it does all this. And what we have approved is the ability to rebuild that arena. If we can expand this, we can reorient it and put a fourth sheet in. But we need to be able to make that decision, because if we just rebuild East and the orientation is now, that kind of precludes doing a fourth sheet later. It makes it more difficult in the future, that we can be more space-efficient if we do them together, and save some money in the process. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Under the initial concept plan that was amended, the South Arena would be removed-- Under the initial concept plan that was amended, the South Arena would be removed, and two sheets would then be added to go east-west versus the South Arena, which runs north-south.
Okay.
The East Arena is the one that does have the permafrost. It would remain in its current orientation.
Okay, so East would be replaced, and then South would be replaced with two.
Correct.
And so, but to do it all at once saves a lot of money.
Absolutely correct.
Yes.
And gains us higher efficiency in how we can master plan around the arena improvements as well.
Okay.
Redundant systems, better energy efficiency in planning.
Okay, excellent. And it also makes the driveway area much safer, which we won't be able to do under the current funding scheme. And if we can expand our use of the local option sales tax, we can fix that dangerous drop-off area.
That is correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-116, which will formally inform the state legislature of the city of Adina's request to increase the spending authority of the recently approved local option sales tax in order to build additional ice capacity at Braemar Arena by adding a fourth indoor ice rink to the Braemar complex?
So moved.
Second.
Member Anderson moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Motion 2022-116 is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we are on to the last item within the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and that is potential approval of modifications to our tax increment financing policy. And our economic development director, Bill Nundorf, has this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is, as you mentioned, a proposal to update our tax increment financing policy. This topic has been a topic of conversation at the HRA for a few months, and it's important to note that Adina first used tax increment financing, or TIF, back in the early 1970s. That's when the HRA was created, and TIF was used to finance a lot, a whole slate of improvements at 50th and France nearly 50 years ago. Our current policy was most recently updated in 2011, and it serves our basic needs just fine. But there's always questions about tax increment, and there's questions from the community, questions from developers, and so it's our recommendation to update the policy to address a lot of those questions and topics of conversation, and to clarify the intent and purpose for when Adina does use tax increment financing. It's important to note that most projects in the city are privately financed, but there are from time to time exceptional projects that have unusual situations, excessive costs, or just would not otherwise be met by the private sector without the use of TIF. And so that's where this policy comes into place. As we've written these updates, we've focused on six primary objectives, and all of them are really clarifications about what we do or what we strive to do. Topics like when TIF is used and the purpose for that. In Adina, it's important to note that we tend to use TIF even less restrict, even more restrictively than allowed by the state statute. And the state statute is not very generous, but in Adina, we have used TIF to finance public benefits that would not otherwise be achieved. It's something we do every time we sit down and talk with a real estate developer. Now we're recommending, let's actually put that in writing in our policy, so people know what to expect. We've also added some clarification about the review process, added some expectations regarding transparency with information, financing information about TIF. It's all available in state reports, county reports. It's on our website. It's in an annual redocument that the HRA publishes every January. There's lots of information out there. We're recommending, let's actually put that in the policy, so people know what to expect. We also have a lot of new content that really focuses on expectations for developers. And the general thought is that when it comes to financial risk, that always is with the private sector developer. It's not the city's money at risk, it's their money at risk. But also, we want to make it clear that we would provide support for exceptional projects. Not projects that meet the bare minimum standards, but those that really aspire and strive to meet the ideals that we've defined as a community. And those ideals are established in our comprehensive plan, in our small area plans, our sustainability plans. There's lots of various conversations that we've had over the years, and that's where we define those public benefits. So those are the recommendations in this policy. Since this was presented to the HRA in November, Councilmember Staunton and Anderson have asked for some additional clarifications, so we've made those. We've added some clarifications regarding the role of the Southdale Design Guidelines that they pertain to projects in that greater Southdale area, not throughout the city, and also added clarification about when TIF is used by the city to finance public garages, public roads, public sewers, those types of things. We don't want to preclude ourselves from using TIF when it makes sense for publicly-financed projects. And Councilmember Anderson had asked, actually had a suggestion of whether or not we could use or modify the policy to charge additional fees to developments that use TIF. And that's something we've started to look into. It's not an easy question to answer. I did reach out to colleagues in the city of New Hope. This is something they looked into many years ago, but ultimately did not move forward with it for a number of reasons. One of the biggest reasons is that it was very difficult to assess how much a service visit actually costs, and how do you find a path in state statute to charge one property a fee where the other property doesn't have to pay that fee? So looking at some of the fees that we already assess in Adina, whether you're in a TIF district or not, fees such as zoning applications, construction permits, utility connections, roadway improvements, park fees, they're separate fees for all those services. That would remain. We also charge, if there's emergency response, that includes an ambulance trip for the patient, there's a fee for that. That's assessed to everybody. But what's included in the general fund are some of those maintenance issues. Snow plowing, shoveling or plowing the sidewalks on the busy streets, fixing the water main that broke, doing a mill and overlay on a road, a basic maintenance. Those are all included in the base taxes, and those are the ones that are really tricky to try to determine how you would charge one property for shoveling a portion of the road when you're not charging the other, and the same for emergency services like police and fire. So it's something, if directed by the council, we're happy to try to research that further in the upcoming year. But at this point, staff's recommendation is to move forward with the proposal as modified, and that's in your packet. And if approved, we'll bring that to the HRA later this evening, so that the city policy matches up with the HRA policy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for Mr. Nundorf? Yes, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to your point, Mr. Nundorf, I think that, and it really, it follows clarified minimum expectations for developers. And I just, I would mention that one of the reasons that it's reasonable to, only in the event of a TIF district being created, that benefits the developer, and I think that's pretty clear. Yes, it does, it creates the project, and if it's the butt-for test that has to be met, and so we know that it might not happen if the TIF district isn't created. However, we have an expectation that the tax base will be increased. It's just that that tax base is, and the return there is deferred. And often, in fact, we've had people even appeal tax valuation to reduce that base amount even before construction starts. So it seems reasonable and fair to me that when expenses are incurred by the city and ultimately passed through the taxpayer, that it's, in the event of TIF district-favored projects, that we do at least research a formula and have that as consideration. I fully understand that we're not going to do that tonight, and it is touchy. My experience was with New Hope, and I'm quite certain that once upon a time, we did participate in that way, but that could have been an upfront fee. But in any event, I just, this is a seed that I'd like to see planted, because I think it's the fairest way to approach that, until the city receives the benefit of the increased tax base, which can be 15 or 22 years. In the meantime, those expenses mount, and we're creating density, especially in the Southdale District. Those calls will mount. That's one of the reasons we're building the new fire and safety health building. So I think that all in all, it's something that I would love to see considered, and that could be your parting gift to me. Thank you.
Other questions, comments with regard to the TIF policy modifications that have been worked on by staff and by the council, frankly? And again, thank Member Jackson for editing. I think she did some work on this, extensive work on it. Is there a motion to approve the updated tax increment financing policy for the city of Adina?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Jackson, to approve the updated tax increment and financing policy for the city of Adina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. The tax increment financing policy in its updated form is adopted. All right. We are now on to, I think, Manager comments.
Thank you, your honor. I have two things. One was just to draw your attention to the item that was included in the packet on the McCauley Trail Shared Youth Path. What we are asking, or just clearing with the council, that we do want to cooperate with some of the concerns that the church expressed, and we think we can do that. That's what that letter says. The other item that I have for you is not included on the agenda itself, but it's this box. Can they, yeah, right here. This box came to City Hall on October 10th of 2016. It was addressed to the attention of Kevin Staunton, who was a brand-new council member at the time. It didn't have, it didn't have any return address on it. So when I got it, I took it out to my executive assistant and said, why don't you open this?
I thought you were saying you took it to the bomb squad.
Just in case. You know, I didn't know what it was, right? So we opened it up, and inside, there was a beautiful note written by a woman who had lived in Adina for many, many years, and she had watched the council meeting that week, and Councilmember Staunton had voted on something that she approved of, I think, a solar project of some kind. And she was happy, and he was, happened to be wearing a bowtie that night when he took that vote, and she sent him a box of her husband's former bowties. And her husband had died, but he had worn his bowtie every day to work, and she wanted Councilmember Staunton to have these bowties. I told him, you can't have these bowties, because that's a violation of the gift, a gift law. But on January 4th, he'll no longer be subject to that gift law. And so on January 4th, I'm going to hand this box of bowties over to former Councilmember Staunton. And it's just one way of telling you that we appreciate your service, and Councilmember Anderson as well.
Do I get a bowtie?
I'll grab one of these bowties for you. There's a nice green one in here.
There's Christmas t-shirts.
There are. But on behalf of staff, we just want you to know how much we've enjoyed working with both of you over these years, and thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. I feel like we should just continue the momentum of that. We had a wonderful, I don't know, just a gathering of residents in our community and former city council members, mayor from another town, people from the League of Minnesota Cities that came here between 5:30 and 6:30 to celebrate the service by Ron Anderson and Kevin Staunton. And we were able to, over the past several weeks, put together videos for each of them to express how much we think of them as people, as leaders in our community. And it was just a wonderful hour that we spent out here with just this terrific feeling in the air. And so I don't think we'll go back into what we were doing, you know? If you're Norwegian, I mean, you can't, your parents wouldn't want you to get celebrated too much.
I'd get embarrassed.
Yeah, and they don't want you to get a big head. They'd be looking down, thinking about it. And Irish, probably the same, from your heritage.
We're all for celebrating.
You mean, you had something good to say about my kid? Great. Well, I was gonna, you know, I had trouble saying what I wanted to say, how grateful we were when you came up here to the University of Minnesota, but more fundamentally, I think, just from knowing you all these years, how grateful I've been to realize what great parents you must have had to raise a kid like you and your family. And here, you talk about some of those stories of your mom and your dad, and your dad coming from Ireland, and it just had to be a fantastic family environment for a person like you to come out of Chicago and then come up here and stay here, and we're really grateful for it.
You're just gonna keep working until you make me cry, aren't you? Can't leave until you cry.
So.
I have been thinking about those bowties for eight years, though.
So we've got some gifts for both of you. I was gonna do a little report, but I think we should just keep this going. I can give that report on that little trip down to Chicago on December 8th later. And.
R.A.
Oh, the R.A. thing.
Oh, R.A.
I understand.
If Ron Anderson went, it'll look good on my wall.
And then we're, I think we'll all walk down in front and get photos taken with our colleagues.
That's from tonight?
That's from tonight. Thank you.
All right, let's all go down together and get some photos taken. What was in the box? I just see what was in there.
Bring out a weight, mayor, to know what's in there.
It's your official plaque.
Oh, do you want to hold your plaques to the photo?
With your name tag from the council.
Yeah, I think you should have your plaques.
Yeah. Do you want to have your deeper plaques, Ron?
Yeah.
Sure.
I get a fish.
Oh.
Thank you.
Didn't notice. It's my second name.
It's paper tonight.
I didn't know.
Oh, I'm losing it.
Two guys in the middle.
They really do. Let me, I didn't know it was their paper.
All right, I'll show some more here.
All right, anyone else have a photo? I'm gonna do one on my phone, too. You know, for the social media. Aww.
Can I see if Kevin starts to tear up?
I think for the folks at home that might be wanting to watch the city council meeting, we should ask you to just comment again briefly about, and share some of your thoughts that you shared with us at 5:30. So Ron, do you want to go first?
Sure, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, actually, I have several thoughts, including those I made earlier, and.
staff for the opportunity to either represent or work with them over the last four years, because it's been an eye-opening, fast-moving learning experience, as well as a true blessing. What I've learned is an excellent and talented staff can accomplish almost anything, that there are so many who have made such a deep impression. But I wanted to spend just a moment, and especially acknowledge the efforts of two women who make the trains run on time in my experience here at City Hall. In the not-so-distant past, I watched Communications Director Jennifer Benarot diffuse an emotional confront of event here in the chambers one evening, and really, based on her personality and kindness, turned that into what ultimately became a very positive, respectful exchange of information. That was very powerful and one of the most memorable experiences I have had here, so thank you for that. It was impressive then, and in retrospect, even more so. Thank you. The other person that I think is amazing is City Clerk Sharon Allison, because this city clerk runs an election every year, which has done as well or better than anywhere in the country. I know that she is responsive to the public and also has an understated way of bringing corrections to the dais when needed, and so thank you for that. Fair Chief Slama and Police Chief Milburn, who have more or less recently joined city staff, have both brought expertise, patience, and professionalism to their respective departments, and I think we're awful darn lucky to have them. If they were here, but didn't may watch this, I just want to thank them for their leadership. In mentioning just these few of the so many outstanding city representatives that we have a chance to work with, it says an awful lot about the person who recruited and hired them, City Manager Neal. He has a true knack for attracting and retaining talented people. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of your own personal talent and your diligence in attracting great people to the city, so thank you for that. Many people are not aware that City Clerk Allison forecasts an adjournment time for each council meeting. My colleague to the left, Carolyn Jackson, has cheerfully taken, over the last couple of years, a running 25-cent bet on what the adjournment time will either be, on an over or under basis. And I want you to know, Member Jackson, that all those quarters that I've been collecting from you[827.43][827.43](laughter) are in a jar on my mantle to be used for emergency purposes only, but at least you'll know where they are. James Pierce, and we saw this earlier tonight, James Pierce has a way of looking at things that's fascinating. His take on problem-solving is very creative and very direct. He hits the nail on the head, but always respectful while appreciating all points of view. That's, that's an amazing talent. I told him once that he needs his own podcast, and I meant it. So when you, when you do get that, Councilmember Pierce, I hope you have me on. Kevin Staunton is an insightful, friendly man who has brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to his council work. Along the way, we've had some long talks and shared lots of ideas, and I want to thank you for those times because they have really opened a lot of thinking for me, so thank you for that. And I think I'll see you at the Twins opener. Sitting next to Jim Hovland is, to me, like an adult learning course in how to run a meeting. He has a sense of humor that has often taken the tension out of numerous conversations, and that's an underappreciated quality, because it has the ability to just kind of settle things down and give us all a chance to laugh a little. Best of all, I've always known that there'd be at least one other person here wearing a tie, and so thank you for that. And in closing this time, I'd like to thank our great city and each of my colleagues for this shared experience. It's been a very respectful change of diverse opinions and ideas, and I thank you for the fact that this time together has made me a better person, a better man. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ron. Kevin Staunton.
Well, it's, I'm so grateful to have had this opportunity. As you know, I've worked my whole, much of my professional life in local government. I've kind of done everything in local government. And to have a chance to be elected and serve your community is, has been just an extraordinary piece of that experience. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier tonight, it's been 17 years or, you know, 85, 90 years of dog years that I've been doing this, and it's, it's just, it's been an extraordinary experience. I have to thank my family, my wife Maria, my boys Kyle, Jack, Will. They, you know, I think all of us who are up here and all of us who have been up here know that your families are part of this, too, because they do without you in the evenings. They make sacrifices as well, so. So if you're looking for something, some way to serve, you can persuade your spouse to run. But it's, they've been an extraordinary support for me. And my wife Maria, who, those of you who know her know that, you know, if I was golfing five days a week, it wouldn't work, but she values this just as much as I do, and so she's been really supportive of it. And the community, like Ron, I'm grateful that people trusted me to, you know, act in this capacity for the last eight years, and that the mayor and the council before that trusted me on the planning commission, and that's been an extraordinary experience. And, you know, I said earlier that people who are out there, who watch what we do, you know, it can't, I can't tell you how much it means when we get a kind word in the middle of very difficult discussions. It might be an email, it might be a text, it might be a voicemail, it might just be seeing you on the street. I can't tell you how many times I've gotten those at just the right moment, just the right moment. And so if, if you want to figure out a way to contribute that doesn't take much time, thank one of these council members, because they do really hard work. And then to the staff, you know, Ron, I'd echo the comments I remember Jennifer, that evening like it was yesterday. It was an extraordinary moment, and I just, it was, it was amazing. So thank you for your work, Sharon. All the rest of you, you do amazing work. Scott, you do a great job leading them, and it's an extraordinary experience. Finally, all of you, you know, all of you and the folks who I served with before you and the folks who served before me and the folks who will serve after me, this is the toughest job in local government. I know because I've been on both sides. It's, it's a really challenging job, and it takes a lot of sacrifice and experience. And, you know, there's a lot of, government is, is sometimes criticized, not without merit sometimes, but I think local government is where it happens, and we have to talk to people like we did last week or two weeks ago. We have to listen. We have to meet people in the grocery store. They know where to find us every two weeks here. And, and even though there is one Congress, there's almost 20,000 city councils across the country. Even though there is one state legislature in this state, there's over 800 city councils in Minnesota. So it's a good place to make a difference. And one of the quotes that always comes back to me is Martin Luther King's quote about "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." And it seems like a lofty thing to say about a city council, a local government, but, but, you know, when I think about that parable that I told earlier about the starfish, you know, a young woman is standing in the beach by the ocean when the tide has receded and there are starfish littering the beach, and she's throwing the starfish back into the water, and a man comes up to her and says, what are you doing? There's hundreds, if not thousands, of these. You're never gonna make a difference. And she listened politely. She bent down, she picked up another starfish, threw it into the water, and said, I made a difference for that one. And that's what we do. We try to make a difference, one, one hearing at a time, one constituent at a time, one listening at a time. I know that's what our staff does. I know that's what all of you do, and it's been extraordinary to be part of it, so thank you all, and I will be watching fondly from the cheap seats from here.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Well, we've had a chance to celebrate and work with these two great gentlemen, one for a longer period of time than the other, quite a bit longer period of time, but so appreciative of their service to our community, and I think it was appropriately celebrated before we had this meeting. I don't know if any of my council members had any thoughts they wanted to express, or we will. Member Jackson?
This has been an extraordinary group to work with, just absolutely extraordinary. And I know we'll, we'll have a good council going forward, but I want to thank both of you for your commitment to the community and your thoughtfulness. Every conversation we've had has been just thoughtful and with the best intents in mind always. I've learned a lot from both of you. I do have to say, you know, my beginning in public life in Edina was as a PTO president, and Kevin was also a PTO president at the same time. We were on the PLC together, and so I just can't imagine not serving without you, but thank you both.
Thank you. Member Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely just want to say thank you to both of you, Ron. We've had great conversations. I've grown as a leader and as a person in many of those conversations, and I'd say probably the one that stuck with me the most, I was actually in Chicago, and we were talking, we were chatting, and we were talking about principles, like the principles I use to make decisions, and then you were sharing the principles that you use to make decisions. And at the end of that conversation, I thought to myself, hmm, we, people are more alike than they are different, but they have to take the time to understand that. And so I definitely appreciate that with you. And then for Kevin, I love the fact that I sit here for two reasons. I've already told the one story of sitting next to. I don't know, have I ever told that? We, my daughter and I came in here, we had to choose where to sit, and she had met Sharon earlier, and so I literally am sitting in the chairs, the guy, should I sit here or there? Jamie says, was that, where does that nice lady sit? So, well, she sits right there, and she said, you should sit next to her. And so, and I thought that was funny, but I definitely enjoy sitting next to you, Kevin. And I have worked, my father was an electrician on the weekends, and I worked with him since I was seven years old until I graduated undergrad. And I just have all these life lessons from him. And there's one where he said to me, you never change anything until you understand why first. And, you know, and so I'm sure people have heard the saying, it is more important to understand why than it is to understand how, right? Because once you understand why a thing is the way it is, then you can start to make meaningful change to it. And there have been a number of times I've leaned over to Kevin and said, all right, what's going on now? Why are we doing this? We actually did it tonight. And so I appreciate that in you, and the highest compliment that I can give anybody is that it made me think about my father. And so I'm gonna miss not sitting next to you in our first meeting in January. I'll wear a bowtie.
Wow. Our town is really blessed. This council is blessed by the people who are members of it. Thank you so much for your service to everyone in our community. This holiday season, we wish all of you the best and hope that it's a wonderful time for you and your families, and we, let's count our blessings that these two gentlemen helped guide our town for the period of time that they were with us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Staunton, and second by Member Anderson, that we adjourn this city council meeting for the city of Edina on this Tuesday, the 20th of December, 2022. We wish you both the best.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. We stand adjourned.
Hi.